Hello Emily.
Hey Ron.
Shayla, congratulations. For your appointment on the Cannabis Commission.
Hey Ron, hey Emily.
Hello.
Take it from that you can hear us?
Yes, we can.
Now then, the owl is doing what it's supposed to do.
Is the air filter on in the background?
A little bit.
Okay, interesting.
Everybody.
Shayla.
Hey Shayla.
How's it going?
It is better.
Good.
We had a bit of a rough start, but everybody is good and I'm semi-functional again, which is excellent.
Yay.
And I read the minutes and I didn't miss the equity thing. It sounds like we're gonna do that again or?
Yeah, you know, I supplied the materials, but the person that we were gonna have come wasn't able to come. So we'll have Krista Lee back as I start to nail down the schedule. And we'll talk about that tonight.
I need to duplicate what y'all are doing at that annex for another meeting I go to.
With the wide camera Ron?
Yeah, so I'm talking to a group of people in a big room and those of us here on Zoom can only see one person. And then we have all sorts of echo from the cross talk that people do.
Sure, yeah, the meeting owl has definitely been everything we hoped it would be in terms of plugging it in and having it just work.
How much did that set you back?
Remember Emily, 2,000 bucks for the two pack or 1,500 for the two packs?
Yeah, they're about $1,000 each.
Oh wow.
So I think we have a quorum. I see Jill, Shayla, Ron, external and Kate and I are here. And we're not expecting Megan. She asked me to chair because she's out of town. So is it okay if we start? Hello, too. Call the meeting to order and I don't see the agenda up. We look at the agenda.
Yeah. Emily, you can share if you want to give my account screen share. I'm happy to take on some of that too. She's got it, great.
So is the first part just opening the meeting? So where we had public comment? Any public comment? Did anybody say they wanted to make comment?
I hadn't heard from anybody, no.
Minutes. I made, I think, two just clarification edits and I didn't see any other edits when I was in there. Yeah, and that example, the he sounded as though it might have been Taylor because he was in the previous sentence, but it was my comment. And I think it was one other. Nope, that may be it. Did folks have a chance to look at this?
I read it. I wasn't there, but I found it very helpful. I appreciate them.
That is true. When there's detailed notes like this, it really helps those of us who aren't present, as do the recordings. I entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
There was one, I'm sorry.
Go ahead Kate.
It's in five second paragraph, the last sentence. It just says Matt stated that does expect, I think it's he.
Yes.
I'll move to accept as amended.
So it's he, right? He does expect a change, yeah. Okay, so you move and who seconds?
I second.
Okay, Ron second. So Kate moved, Ron second. Any comment? Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay. Next. Are there reports from other jurisdictions?
Yep, and we don't have any this time.
And then was that update from the Select Board meeting of last Tuesday?
So yeah, just under the listing of Form Based Code, I wanted to thank everybody who was able to come. That was really helpful and we've been working with the consultant team on the schedule for the coding exercise. What that entails is a couple of things, a pretty rapid response, complete draft code based loosely on the vision or tightly on the vision, depending on how you look at it. And then we'll be breaking that down by subject area. So throughout the fall and early winter, we'll have a meeting night where we talk about architectural standards. We'll have a meeting night where we talk about building placement, street frontage. We'll have a meeting to talk about the regulating plan, et cetera. We're also working to revise the project to bring Jeff Farrell up to Williston live and in person in early September. And we're hoping to set aside that meeting likely around September 7th or close to it for a walk around in Taft Corners with Jeff and the commission because in talking, we felt like that's the thing we've gotten to do the least of. Jeff's not gotten to do any of that and have a live discussion about some of what we see on the ground and what we'd like the code to achieve. So we'll be coming back to you with a project schedule at the next meeting on August 17th to talk about how we're gonna sort of break this project into bite sized pieces. And the other piece will be a public engagement piece for the staff to work on. Number one, putting the vision plan out on the website and announcing that it's there. And then we're gonna create a project journal or blog. And what we will put on that is for each of these subject areas of the code, we, the staff and team, will do a one to two page write-up that says, you know, okay, architectural standards, what is this about? Here's the list of everything we're doing. This is the one we're focusing on. What does this mean? What does it not mean? What are some of the choices the commission has about that particular subject area? So for architectural materials, it's about what materials where. For regulating plan, it's about what kind of streets where. And sort of, we're gonna try to write that in really, really easy to understand terms, both for the commission who are, you know, virtual experts in all of this now, having lived with it as long as you have. And it's also for the public so that we can hopefully bring the public and stakeholders into those conversations as needed. And be able to stay on topic. You know, when you say to somebody, Taft Corners, what do you think? That's a lot of input. When you say, what kinds of materials on which buildings where would help this feel like a Williston plan or would make this work for Taft Corners, you can have that much more focused conversation. So we'll be ramping up to do our public engagement side of that, to firm up that project schedule and to come back so we can get going on a draft. Last thing I'll say, I did put a link to the Winuski code in your email announcing this meeting. I can send that again. It's worth looking at, not so much because it's Winuski, but because Jeff Farrell and Associates wrote it. So the format and layout should.
And some of the photos.
Some of the photos, the example photos and the fonts and everything will look a little familiar and you can kind of get into the weeds looking at how the development standards play out. And you start to realize it's a lot when you look at it all at once. One of the exercises we'll do with the Williston draft, and we have it, is take a particular site or project through. I said to Emily, after I had sent that link out, I said, you know, reading the whole Winuski code at once, or any of these Form Based Codes at once, it's like reading one of those choose your own adventure books without ever actually skipping any pages. You're just reading the whole thing and what you actually get is something that is not connected and it's out of sequence. So you have to use the code to say, well, where am I? What's the kind of thing I'm trying to build? And where am I going from there? So the second item on that list, work plan for coding, stay tuned, we've got some emails flying around on the team right now. And there will be a bit of a lull here where you won't hear as much about Form Based Code. Part of what the consultant team needs to do is come back to some of the town departments, Public Works Fire, et cetera, and talk about how this interacts with some of the things they have an interest in, as well as the planning side. So that's where we're at.
As a process point, I want to say anybody who's remote, use the hand raising if you want to speak because if we here in the room are not seeing all the people at once, as sometimes your video's off or we don't see you because something else on the screen, we will see you if you raise your hand. It moves you to the top of the list and we see. In terms of debriefing about the Select Board, I wanted to share that Megan and Matt and I all took, made comments on the transmittal, was it called transmittal letter? And Matt did a good job of sort of synthesizing that. And if you haven't seen it, I hope that you do get a chance to see it and comment if you want to. I think it accurately represents where we are. The in person, Megan, Kate and I, I think we're in person and Ron and Jill and Alex?
I think Alex was there.
I think we're remote. Shayla, I don't know if you were.
I was not there.
Okay, and that meeting has been broadcast multiple times and you also can, we can share the link to it if you want to see that discussion. Matt?
No, yeah, I read the transmittal letter and I actually just have a question about it.
Sure, go ahead Shayla.
So have we already sent that? Are we about to send it? Where are we in that process?
I'll go ahead. So Shayla, that was, that was sent shortly before the Select Board meeting on the 27th.
Okay.
Had the most recent draft of the vision, but we wanted to capture the sort of the friction points and the shared understanding about Taft Corners from the planning commission and make sure that that voice was in the Select Board's conversation.
And you had a comment about it Shayla?
Okay, no, so that, that actually makes my comment obsolete, but then are they determining some of those friction points or? What's their role there?
So their, their role really was to check in with the planning commission, ask any clarifying questions about the vision or the transmittal, add any of their own questions or friction points to the conversation and essentially give a head nod to move on with coding, with actually writing the rulebook that would live behind this vision. So we have that head nod as far as I'm concerned and off, off we go into the nuts and bolts.
We had comments of thanks for all the work that went into it and thanks to the consultants, thanks to the staff, thanks to the planning commission and to the public. And all the comments we got were positive. Jeff asked probing questions, tried to see if he could pull the thread and uncover something of interest, but he was very much behind the plan. Yeah, so I think it was, I think as a check-in, it was successful.
Okay, and we feel like we've gotten sort of the go-ahead to move forward.
Yeah. Yes Jill?
I thought with Jeff, his questioning and line of thinking around it, and I think you did a nice job, Chape, in trying to clarify that we're sort of talking about maybe major changes in the municipality that we're talking about if we're talking about a big pool or dog parks, the type of infrastructure and staffing you'd have to do. And I feel like to me, they weren't really understanding that or, you know, they were talking so much about budget and, you know, not wanting to, you know, add taxes or what have you, but I feel like there's a leap that we're gonna eventually have to get to with them where what we're really talking about is building something that then demands a lot more from the town that the town doesn't currently do. And I was just curious if we could get it in front of that by, you know, are there examples from other towns that have kind of done that leap in Vermont? Where they've gone from like really small to then now we're, you know, we have, we're hiring pool people and we're hiring lifeguards and we're hiring more plow people, you know, there is like a precipice that we're gonna be on with this vision ideally, right? From our standpoint of adding all these like beautiful additions to our community that the town is gonna look different and it's gonna have to operate different. And I felt like he didn't quite see, it was sort of like, that wasn't really clear to me that he understood that or like that's, at least that's where we're coming from as the PC. And I think if we could maybe show, you know, this town has done this and this is what it looked like and this is how it adds in terms of like annual operating costs or what have you, or, you know, personnel, like full-time personnel, part-time personnel. I just thought that would be helpful if we sort of were thinking about that now. And that, that was just something that I noticed from the last convo.
Yeah, that's a really good point Jill. And I think that's one of those things where the staff here and myself continue to have to kind of be the messenger in front of the Select Board that, you know, they're engaging with, I guess I would call it future complexity. And, and that there are things on this plan that come with price tags, like I forget how exactly I made the point, maybe not with them as clearly as I should, but all of those green spaces, virtually all of them are identified pieces of land that the town does not own and would have to seek to acquire and then, and then maintain. And that's just one example. So to your point, not a really small place that became really big, but a big place that became more involved, South Burlington has been, I think, the nearest example with city center. You know, that really does represent a fundamental shift from entirely developer driven, okay, if you want to build here, here's what you've got to do, to we're gonna be, South Burlington speaking, we're gonna be a municipality that works with the private sector to get public streets built, to get public facilities built and to integrate the plan for some of the facilities South Burlington was building, like the new city hall and the library with the plans the private sector had for things like residential, commercial. There are new parks in there, but you know, the financial tools that live behind city center, like tax increment finance districts, that's something that Williston has sort of tiptoed in the direction of, but never actually taken on. And with good reason in terms of being careful about that sort of thing. Because you do have to be, you do have to be careful. You're making a bet that the public improvements you fund are going to increase the tax base enough to pay off the loan. That's, that's really what TIF is. And whether it's that tool or some other tool or something beyond what I would characterize as a somewhat hands-off approach that Williston has had thus far, this plan represents, you know, a step towards that. And I will say that, you know, I mean, I've been working in the town on one project, off and on, it's been around since I've been around and before, the idea of building the Trader Lane Bridge Street. And all along, what that's been characterized by is the town trying to put together, along with the private sector, the funding package that would make that project work, whether it was through a special assessment district or TIF or just a partnership with a private developer. That's to my knowledge, the first time the town's even considered having that shared role in a piece of infrastructure. So, you know, with Zephyr Road as part of Fiddy Crossing, it was, you want to build Fiddy Crossing, you're gonna need Zephyr Road. Go build it. We'll take it when it's, you know, 100% complete and kind of wrapped up with a bow on it. So I would feel, I would have felt more comfortable over the years engaging on Trader Lane if it was part of a plan that said eyes wide open, we're doing something different here, we're getting more involved in what happens in this part of town. So I think it does bear emphasis with the board. The vision plan is a big document. The land use development standards that come out of it, that the planning commission's gonna work on are a major component of that implementation plan, but they're not the only component. You write those rules for development, but you don't plan for how you're going to get those green spaces or create those community spaces or be ready to build or accept infrastructure as it comes online. You know, I mean, as, as it is, one of the overarching issues in that section at the back of the vision is about wastewater capacity. And, you know, what, what we know is until we do something different and more about wastewater, we've got about 20 years worth. So your vision that goes to 2070, you know, we've, we've got till 2040 in the bag in terms of sewer capacity and then we have to strategize. So, and that's not to say we're gonna wait till then. We're working on that now following this attachment A conversation this year. But those, you're absolutely right. Those are all those things. As to like staffing levels and, and sort of operating budget impacts, that's a really good question. There is some work that's been done out there trying to compare the relative size of a community to its municipal budget in Vermont. One of my colleagues down in Manchester did some work on that. It's all over the map. There are places that are really, really big or really intense in terms of activity in the town that run on what looks to us like a skeleton crew. And there are places that are quite a bit better resourced and it's, it's really interesting in Vermont, the municipalities seem to have taken all different approaches to that. I can, I can tell you what my preference is, which is to staff up for it.
Yeah, I mean, and there's a lot of models, right? You could even have like a green space collaborative that's sort of is formed as a nonprofit that then becomes the placemakers who, you know, get the people going to the amphitheater for something, get the, you know, there's a lot of ways that we could envision what will be if they're sort of turned off to the idea of bulking out staff or the municipality. But I think, you know, thinking about that now, because, you know, we talk a lot about the nuts and bolts, but I think what we've seen from feedback from the community is that we want all these things built and done so that we can do the activities with the families and that we can have the festivals and that, you know, it's, it's like all these soft things that aren't the first priority, but will matter to make any of it vibrant or viable.
So I think your point is really well taken Jill, and I personally think there's gonna have to be either a TIF or some other special tax district because I don't think politically, people in the town who don't live at Taft Corners and don't like Taft Corners getting bigger or more dense will feel okay about spending their tax money on making it a better place. And so I really think it's gonna have to be at least partially funded by something from within that district. So I, that's my personal opinion. I'm sorry, Emily has her hand up. Is that right? No, is that a cursor?
Hey Chape, and I've got my hand up. I didn't understand Jill's question. Was it that the planning, or sorry, the Select Board needs to really understand that and we need to get them that or that the contractor, who is it that we need?
We need the Select Board.
The Select Board, okay.
I was, what Jill was saying is I got up and spoke at one point, just sort of prompting them, hey, this is, complexity is coming with density and we're gonna have to have increased municipal services and expenses. And that's what Jill was commenting on. And I think what Matt's saying is that it's up to him to keep communicating to the town manager and the Select Board that that is something that comes with this and we have to be thinking about it.
Got it. Thank you guys.
You know, another good point about that, there's a mention in the market study section of the vision plan about residential demand and, and sort of acknowledging that the town has its growth management system. And I think there's a real sort of gas and brake balance there for the town in terms of how, how willing is it to free up the rate of something like residential development in exchange for better design? And at what point does it say, you know, we still want to have a little bit of that growth management system in place because we want to make sure we're concurrent with our services? So that, questions of phasing and focus are prominent in the vision document as a result of that. It's a big plan area. It's sort of sparsely and dispersively developed. And how do you stitch that together so that it really starts to become of a piece over time? And, and, you know, there's, there's some good questions, I think, in there and also related to that limited wastewater treatment capacity, which we actually budget for by various types of use. How do we spend that limited resource in the context of a plan that continues to focus growth on, you know, fewer than 1,000 acres in the town? So I'm not gonna leave the Select Board alone about that. I guess that's what I would say.
In terms of debriefing, I wanted to say a couple of things, if I may. One is that, and thank you for including the link to the Winuski Form Based Code, 70 pages or something. It wouldn't seem like such a bad journey reading it if, if it were just for one type of building, you know, the core or the residential or the edge, but there's basically four codes or so, I don't remember, it's three or four altogether. And so it's a lot to go through, but if it were just the one, it wouldn't be too bad. But in reading it, I feel as though we're not gonna have that much problem with all the technical stuff. I think we're gonna, to me, the issue relates to implementing the energy plan and how that affects it. We haven't even talked about that yet. You know, we don't want one building shading the next person's solar or not making use of its rooftop because we say the roof has to be a certain pitch and oriented towards the street away from the street. We're gonna, we have some things to work out there, but the illustrations, they're called illustrations of intent. And you'll notice in the Winuski one, every single one of them is from summertime. And I feel like in ours, in our vision, every single one is from summertime. And I feel like we need to, some of our comments about what do we, about what do we do with snow and so forth. So I feel like for the vision, we need to add pictures of the other half of the year. I also had asked early on that we have pictures and write a standard for solar canopies for parking. And I feel like they need to be in there. We need to have people and developers thinking about that from the get-go. And so those are two things that came to me.
Great, thank you. I think, I think we can keep those prominent when we talk about some of those choices that the commission has as it adjusts this code.
But probably an important point I'm saying is that 80% of it, that sort of the technical stuff, I, I feel like we're not, we're gonna talk about three stories versus four versus two, you know, we're gonna have some of that discussion. But I don't think the specifications are gonna be that hard, except for the illustrations of intent.
Start, start saving your winter pictures of things now that, that look good and that work correctly because I think there are some really good examples in North America of places that have more winter than we do that, that do it well.
Yes.
Actually Winnipeg is a really good example.
And Ottawa and Montreal, although they are more populous.
Yeah, but you know, thinking, thinking about that, bringing that down to a Williston scale and what, you know, what do you need to have in place? One of the things that was really tough, when I was taking pictures of Taft Corners in February as we were doing our, you know, ramping up our promotion of this, is it's really barren out there. You know, I was out on some of those peripheral greens at Maple Tree Place or even in the pedways at Maple Tree Place. And those pedways, it's like you need a bunch of light and you need a bunch of stuff going on. And literally it's under a roof. It's got walls on both sides and windows with, with things in them, like. And literally it's under a roof. It's got walls on both sides and windows with things in them like it's just that, you know, that shopping center has not really decided to leverage that. And you probably, like you said, Jill, need programming. You know, if you were to imagine Church Street in Burlington without the Marketplace Association, without all of the coordinated efforts that all of those tenant businesses put together. Or the festival cycle there. And again, I'm not saying you have to replicate all of that in Williston. But there's a lot more than just like sort of the city government going on there that makes that place work.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's something that was really common in Baltimore, things called like the Friends of Patterson Parks. So some of the major parks had like nonprofits that function in those parks to be facilitating all of these things that draw people to parks and let people come and recreate there. And I feel like if there's like a Friends of Taft Corners, that's, you know, like coming along and growing alongside this, or even like starting and growing alongside this vision. It would really do a lot, I think, to Chapin's point of folks that might not want to invest their tax dollars in Taft Corners. They don't see the point of it. I think, you know, I don't live in Taft Corners, but I would see the point of that because if it is something that draws me there and brings my family there, because there's robust things going on, I think you could sell it a lot different. And I think that, you know, it demands thinking about it now or sort of like floating these ideas about it now. Because, you know, that's a big undertaking to do. And or you, like you said, you could do it in the municipality. You could staff up and bulk up and have it be all internal. There's a lot of ways to do it, but.
Well, I've had some interesting conversations recently with our recreation director about planning for recreation needs in Williston going forward. And you know, what Todd has said in part about that is he says, look, it's not just about ball fields anymore. And it's not just about, you know, ages six to 16 playing organized team sports. We recognize we have an aging demographic. We have recreation needs across the age spectrum and across different phases of life. So, you know, families are important. That's certainly going to be core to that. But yeah, people who just are looking for something, something public to go to in the middle of winter. Can that happen in Taft Corners? So, you know, and that's, that's another really interesting thing, you know, Todd came to Williston from South Burlington. He, he came from a gigantic rec department and, you know, baseline population, South Burlington is twice the size of Williston. But I would say that a lot of their services are more than twice the size of the services that Williston currently offers. And that, there's a bunch of reasons for that, but we're, we're not that far behind when we think about it. So, you know, Todd is literally a one-person, year-round, full-time department. Everybody else is a summer employee, basically.
Yep. And he keeps the programming going.
Yeah.
So any other comments about the select board review of our vision? Okay, should we move on? Is NEC S next?
I believe it is. Yeah, Emily's nodding, so.
Alrighty, so this afternoon, the advisory committee had their final meeting. And they made a motion on their transmittal memo to the planning commission. Before we go into the details of that, I'm going to pull up the flow chart and go over our process briefly. So the advisory committee meeting met four times. Three Zoom meetings and, or four Zoom meetings, three or four Zoom meetings and one site visit. Their final meeting today, and they prepared a transmittal memo with draft town plan and bylaw amendments for your consideration. We're not asking the planning commission to make any decisions tonight. We're just going to give an overview of what the committee worked on, what the outcomes of their recommendations are. At the next meeting on August 17th, that's when the planning commission can debrief a little bit more and decide if they want to warn those town plan and bylaw amendments to public hearing. If you do decide to warn it to public hearing, we will send out notice letters to everybody who attended the community meeting. We kind of noticed that there was a butter letter requirement at the beginning of this process. It's not required by statute, but we think it's a good idea to send everybody who was at that meeting or got notice of that meeting. Here's what happened. Here's the next step if you want to participate. So New England chimney supply plans have changed a little bit since their original proposal. I'm pulling up there. And set. The addition in parking area is staying the same. They're still proposing the bus pull-off with bike lockers as their substantial benefit. And we'll get to the other part of the substantial benefit, the sidewalk north of their property line in a moment. The sidewalk from along their property lines in Williston Road and Commerce Street. Those are just required by the bylaw. They're not considered a substantial benefit. New England chimney supply had a noise study done by RSG, which determined that they can comply with the sound levels of chapter 18 compatibility in the bylaw. And they're proposing a sound wall. The pink sound wall here is 15 feet in height. Yellow is 10 feet in height. And this blue purple is six feet in height. So most of the noise and impact in the two closest residential properties, the Rocks and the Sorrens, benefit from the 15 and 10 foot wall. And then the six foot wall goes around the parking area. Going to page two. So the applicant and committee discussed the various substantial benefits. There was some guidance from the committee, from you guys, the commission. I will get to that in a moment. They're going to, they're proposing to escrow funds, money to fund the construction of a sidewalk from their property line to South Brunel Road intersection. The challenge with actually constructing that is an easement would need to be obtained from this corner property. V-Trans intamed an easement there several years ago to construct, to expand this intersection. So an easement would need to be obtained. The committee and one of the V-Trans representatives was on the committee discussed like, well, couldn't they just build the sidewalk to here and stub it out? No, because that would put pedestrians jaywalking at this busy intersection. So V-Trans would not support just a sub sidewalk without it wrapping around the corner and having the crosswalks and signalize push buttons. Right now, there's a crossing on the west side and the north side. And for it to be complete, there need to be east and south side crosswalks. So they're proposing to escrow those funds. In terms of substantial benefit, they're proposing the bus pull-off, bike lockers. Green Mountain Transit is providing the shelter for GMT specs. NEC S would just build the pad that it would be located on.
They proposing escrow for the funds because there's the right of way to be worked out and so. And so they're saying we, this is the way we're doing it because the town needs to do things.
Yes, that's actually part one of the reason. So because that easement would need to be obtained. Also, they're kind of right up at their limit of to financially what they can provide a substantial benefit. V-Trans would only want this sidewalk built if there's crosswalks and the signal upgrades. So the town and V-Trans have access to federal grant money to get that infrastructure improvement. So if, what the process would be is if NEC S puts those funds in escrow, the town via Public Works Planning Town Manager would work with V-Trans to figure out the grant application. And I wish I knew more about this, but Bruce and Lisa are our go-tos on this. And getting that funding so that the crosswalks and signals can be upgraded with the sidewalk money as a match. We did encourage NEC S to reach out to this property owner on the corner because those negotiations can go either direction. They could be like, yeah, sure, I'll sign the easement away, or they could not be as conducive. I think Ben Heath said that they have a verbal agreement from this property owner and might be able to get something in writing that this person would be in support of signing easements necessary for the sidewalk. Because that would make it a lot easier for the town to move forward with actually constructing and doing the intersection improvements.
And when we expand a road, we typically pay for the, yes?
It depends. I think so. I would, that would probably be something that would have to be looked into a little bit further of like, what is the recipe for, from escrowed funds to actual construction of what needs to happen? What are the grants? Is this something that they just sign? Are they going to want money for the easement? A lot, a couple of variables to figure out. And then their other substantial benefit of job creation and retention.
By the way, in the previous slide was of the, that diseased red maple that's would be in the way of the sidewalk, the previous slide on the right side there. I just, I'm a tree hugger and I've actually been doing a lot to protect some trees in my spread and plant trees in Williston. But that tree diseased and it's not a, it's, maple is our, one of our most ubiquitous and healthy in this environment species. So if we plant another red maple behind it and remove it, I, I really feel like that's extremely defensible. And I wouldn't say that about many trees.
Here, I'll show you. This is a map of that right of way issue. So the dark blue dashed line, that's V-Trans right of way. And then the town's right of way on South Brunel Road. And that light blue hatching is where an original easement was obtained for this intersection. There's not enough room to wrap that sidewalk around to where the crosswalks would need to be.
Just be a very small increase to the easement that's been given, I see.
Yeah, and it, they have a large front yard, so it wouldn't be, you know, right up against that property owner's house. Now I'm going to pull up the transmittal memo with the edits from this afternoon's meeting. I shared a version with the agenda. This one's slightly different. It's updated today. So the only people that were able to make a vote on this transmittal memo were the committee members, planning staff, me and Matt, and then the NEC S applicant Ben and Pierre. They were not able to vote. There are six yeses and two noes and two absences. The absences were John Marcott, who did provide comment. That's included below. And then the Sorrens, Heather and I believe Jeff Sorin, they were not able to obtain, attend any. They might've come to one committee meeting, but I'm pretty sure they weren't able to come to any. And so they were coordinating with the Rocks, who are their neighbors, and the Rocks were kind of communicating on both of their hands. So they voted yes that the job substantial benefit complies as proposed. NEC S is proposing to retain 80 employees and create the potential for a 10 to 20% increase after this expansion. Substantial benefit two complies as proposed. They're proposing escrow funds to cover the costs of sidewalk construction. And the crosswalks and pedestrian signals would be the town's responsibility to complete the project. And that the transit shelter with bike storage lockers meets the definition of substantial benefit. There is the letter of support from Green Mountain Transit and a Green Mountain Transit rep was at all of the meetings. You might recall providing some guidance to the committee. For example, a crosswalk at Kirby Lane and South Brunel Road. The committee discussed that idea, but decided it was not desirable because it encouraged outsiders to walk around the Kirby Lane cul-de-sac neighborhood as represented by Sarah Rock. And a signal or crosswalk at Route 2 or Commerce Street is not feasible because of the traffic counts would not warrant a signal at that intersection, nor would V-Trans allow mid-rock block crossings. And that was specified by Craig Keller, who was the V-Trans rep on the committee. And then no other ideas for substantial benefit were raised by the committee members that would meet the definition of substantial infrastructure benefit as defined by the town plan. What I did not include in your packet, but what was received was a letter from the Rocks and the Sorrens. They asked about their pump station. So Kirby Lane is served by, sewer is served by a private pump station that's maintained by a little HOA. And that would not be eligible for town takeover because of public work specifications, things are out, that are outside of zoning's control. But we did look into it to see if it was possible. It's not. Third, the committee voted on recommended amendments to the bylaw. These are basically checkboxes and guidance for the DRB to use when they're reviewing the discretionary permit. An amendment that the discretionary permit must include a construction phasing plan that prioritizes the sound wall and landscaping prior to the building addition and parking lot. And that it should identify temporary construction fencing and site work that precedes the sound wall installation. This was drafted to address the Rock and Sorrens concerns about the impact of construction on their properties. Chapter 18, no amendments are recommended here. Basically, we had the applicant do all the heavy lifting now. Give us your noise report. Give us, talk about odor and vibration, et cetera. So there's no deal breakers down the road at discretionary permit. They provided that noise study and determined that their sound levels do comply within the limits of the bylaw and that the sound wall that they propose that the sound wall helps reduce those noise impacts. Chapter 22, design review. The discretionary permit must include some landscaping or fencing to minimize the view of the parking lot and building addition from the public way. The intent is to provide some screening and break up the view, not make the parking lot or building addition completely invisible. And this was written to adjust Cindy Provost, one of the committee members' concerns about the view along Williston Road. She's located directly across the street. So they are proposing a parking lot in the front yard, which is allowable under zoning in the industrial zoning districts. And the landscaping is designed to help break up that view similar to the back and forth that the DRB had with U-Haul's proposal. That's why this guidance was put in. Landscaping, this is still the biggest sticking point for the Rocks who and I believe the Sorrens as well, who live directly behind where the new addition will be. So NEC S shall construct a 17 and a quarter foot type two buffer with sound attenuating walls in heights varying from six to 15 feet as shown on the plan dated, and I need to add the date there. At discretionary permit, planting species selection and location shall be coordinated with the abutting residential property owners to extent that the buffer complies with the species quantity and planting requirements of 23.7 and 23.8. At discretionary permit, the DRB may approve minor modifications to planting schedule or wall location as needed for site engineering. Mainly the Rocks and Sorrens are concerned with the width of that buffer. Typically, it's a 23-foot buffer and the DRB can reduce it to 17 and a quarter where there's the provision of a fence or a wall. The Sorrens and Rocks requested the ability to provide input on the type of landscaping that's proposed. That's why the language is written this way. And then we always know that as things move to full site plan engineering and utility engineering that things change. So we wanted to give the DRB a little bit of flexibility. If some things need to move around in a minor way, that the bylaw can accommodate those logistics. Outdoor lighting, essentially what this says is that the lighting should be at or below the permitted levels. And the bylaw requires that wall lighting, facade lighting be no more than 15 feet above finished grade. And the committee today added this last sentence that the DRB is authorized to adjust lighting levels and fixture location to reduce impact onto abutting residential properties. I'm going to share a photo to show you what I'm talking about. So this is from the site visit. And these wall packs are at the rear of the building, so they do fully shield light from the horizontal and vertical view. But because they're pretty high up and But because they're pretty high up and with the slope, site sloping down towards the Rocks' house, that light does shine onto their property. So with the 15-foot wall along or on the Sorans' property, with the 15-foot wall on the Sorans' property, and then the DRB's flexibility to really look at lighting levels and height of fixtures, we think those lighting issues can be mitigated at discretionary permit. Going back to the transmittal memo. The zoning district boundary would be relocated to include those two residential properties in the industrial zoning district. And therefore, no changes are needed to chapter 36 in terms of the design standards or development standards for industrial zoning district. It's an allowed use. We would just add a statement that acknowledges the existence of this specific plan. Lastly, for the transmittal that goes to the Planning Commission Select Board for Hearing is the Comprehensive Plan Amendments. Adding statements to three sections of the bylaw to acknowledge that this zoning district boundary change helps reduce the disparity between residential and industrial zoning districts near Commerce Street. I'm going to go back to the site plan, I think that would help with my next. So the two properties that they purchased where these additions are going to go have single-family homes on them currently. And where the back of this addition's going to go in parking lot is in the residential zoning district. So currently under zoning, anywhere from one to three residential units could be proposed between this, the Rocks backyard and NECS. And that would further that compatibility issue because more residential would be created near industrial, not less. By shifting the zoning district boundary to the Kirby Lane and Cecil Royer's property and creating that wall, it'll create a firm barrier between these very different zoning districts and prevent the potential for more residential where residential is not desired. The other two amendments are pretty simple for building sidewalks and bus pull-offs to acknowledge where their substantial benefit lines up with existing town plan goals. If there is a desire in the town plan for bus pull-offs along Williston Road as well as filling in gaps in the bicycle and pedestrian system. This next section is not something that would be warned as a public hearing for the town plan or bylaw amendment. But it's questions and concerns that were raised in the committee meetings that we think are worth sharing with you guys, the Planning Commission. These are things to consider when you set your work plan each fiscal year and also when writing the next town plan, which will probably begin, I think, in 2022 or 2023. The next is, oh, yep.
No, I just wanted to say, this document was there when I reviewed the agenda this afternoon. His comments were extremely thoughtful and forward-looking, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll be brief going over about them, but the bylaw doesn't define substantial benefit, or doesn't define substantial. For example, if this was going to be the next IBM facility, would a simple bus pull-off be enough? Probably not. And where, where is that balance point? If they were proposing to buy open space on the other side of town, is that fair when they're impacting residential people on Kirby Lane who wouldn't directly benefit from open space that's not easily accessible to them? So some things to keep in mind with what is a substantial benefit mean? Early on in the process, there is the conversation about energy plan, so what if they were proposing a net zero building or solar canopies over parking? But there's currently no standard for substantial benefit that's related to an energy plan goal. Today, Ron also mentioned about the jobs, that the jobs category doesn't mention living wage or benefit, benefits. We know we're dealing with wage disparity between cost of living and what people make in Chitting County. So maybe that category for jobs gets more criteria added to it. We heard a lot of input from the abutting property owners about the impact of, on their property values. So what's a substantial benefit to the town might not necessarily be a substantial benefit to a property owner who's concerned about, is this going to impact their, their land value? So maybe an amendment where there's a significant difference between the uses, you know, industrial versus residential, that there is an impact study done. And lastly, looking at Gateway Zoning District West overall. If redevelopment is a priority here, then the list of uses may need to be reexamined in concert with the development standards for the zoning district. It's an industrial area, or it's surrounded by industrial area, there's noisy traffic, there's F-35s, there's a lot going on here. Where single-family residential is probably not viable for much longer. And this district was created in 2015, yet six years later, only one project has gone through the development review process to redevelop, and it has not yet constructed. So there's a mismatch between what's allowed in this zoning district and what the market demand is for. For the committee votes, those are listed here and they did provide some comments for you to consider. With that, I'll stop. Let me know if you have questions.
No, and I just comment that those comments from the members of the committee were not there when I read this document this afternoon, so I haven't read those.
Yeah, if you guys want to read through those, those are hot off the press at 4:30. So Ron voted no citing issues with the jobs category, particularly the guarantee for a living wage or match for employees. John Marcott said he would vote yes, he wasn't able to attend, so he couldn't vote. But that the commercial district will inevitably expand. This way, the residents will have a proper sound or view all built and at the developer's expense. The DRB representative John, GMT representative Matt, and V Trans representative Craig, all voted yes. Sarah Rock voted yes, but she still wants to review things in the future. In that moment, she was referencing the landscape buffer width as the one sticking point that she and her husband at the Sorans have with the project. The applicant is not willing to propose more landscape buffer because it takes away from site development area. And this is something for you guys to consider if you do want it for to public hearing. Maybe 17 and a quarter feet isn't enough, maybe it should be the 23, maybe it should be more. And a discussion between the Planning Commission and the applicant and, and these neighbors about that. The Sorans were absent, Cecil said yes. And then Cindy voted no. I'm not going to read through it because it's long and I'm out of breath.
So I think we would, we would want commission members to read over these materials prior to the meeting on August 17. About if you need to know anything more from staff in order to form a decision as to whether the wants to proceed with a hearing on this or not. Let us know if you have clarification questions about the comments Emily's pointing to here. All of that would be useful going into the next meeting.
I, I did read what was available probably before 4:30 this afternoon. And I had one very specific question and it ties in with what I see the Sorans were saying. Looking at the site map with the different heights of sound, sound wall. The fuchsia part on the bottom, on the south side, I don't know if you can pull that up, Emily. But the, I wanted to make sure that both the yellow and the fuchsia barriers between the Rocks and the Sorans and the property, that they're not, that they don't require cutting existing vegetation. It wasn't clear to me from the diagrams.
Yeah, I'm going to pull up Google imagery because I think that will help.
Because my feeling is the existing vegetation should be retained because it softens the look as well as the, you know, neighbors won't be looking at the fence as much as at the vegetation that's already there with the fence behind.
Yeah, and I think, I think it's all yard space, so that existing vegetation on the site is, I think the property line's right in the middle of it. So some of it's on the Rock and Sorans' property, some of it's on NECS. And with that seventeen and a quarter feet, additional landscaping would go on the outside of it and bend the wall. I'm trying to pull up another document from.
I, I don't know if this needs to be resolved right now, but it was to me, the idea of a sound wall that requires taking down the existing vegetation buffer didn't make sense. But if they coexisted, it did make sense. I also, while you're pulling that up, wanted to comment that I had not thought about the fact that three homes could be placed in that backyard and that that would exacerbate the boundary between the two districts more than what's being proposed, I feel. That was a really strong point in favor of doing this.
I'm trying to find, I don't know if I have it saved, but Ben Heath put together a package with showing the elevation view of the wall and the landscaping, as well as what the wall is going to look like. It, it's basically a wood fence with horizontal slats, but the density of material and because there's two layers, it provides a high level of sound attenuation. So it looks like a fence, but it's far more durable.
By the way, Ben, is it Heath or Hertz? Heath sent, the week before, he sent minutes of a meeting and it was very interesting to see the comments by people. That, that, those details are not in our official record, I don't think. I don't know if they should be.
Yeah, so I'll pull together the minutes package for next time. And Matt, there is also a question, I think we should dial in. What grants would be available for the crosswalks and sidewalks? Do we have to buy easement or right of way from this property owner, or can they just voluntarily give it what that process would be like, okay, if we get the escrowed funds, what are the steps that take place between that and actually moving dirt to put in the sidewalk?
So Emily had reached out to our transportation planner folks at the Regional Planning Commission to sort of ask that in a general way, how does this all work? And how would, how would the town proceed if it had this escrowed funding from this applicant and wanted to actually get the sidewalk built and get it connected to the intersection with signalized crosswalks? I think the real big interest from the staff perspective of trying to run a good process for the commission here is that the commission members understand what the risks are and what the feasibility is of what's being proposed. In other words, if you just have a bank account with money in it, but, but no way to spend it to get the thing that you think is the public benefit, that, that is probably not something you might want to work for, vote for. You want to know that there's a high degree of probability that we would be able to make this benefit actually happen on the ground. So one of the questions that was asked during the committee meeting today was if this all lines up and is approved, when or how quickly would the sidewalk be able to be constructed? And I, I wasn't willing to say anything more than sometime between one and five years after the building was constructed. Just knowing the complexity of what happens interact with the state highway and the state agency like V Trans, it's very large and has a lot going on. But I think between now and the 17th, Emily, I hope we hear some more from Marshall Distel at, at the RPC and map out what are the likely pathways to make that happen? So that everybody in the room has a good understanding of how feasible it is and how likely it is to happen in a reasonable timeframe.
Should we think about it as being like a single-use impact fee fund?
It's kind of, it's kind of like that. I mean, this, this is a project that will pay impact fees anyway that go into the general improvement of transportation facilities. It's really like a, what we administer frequently in our development review process, which is a required public or private improvement. You need to build this, you need to put up the money for it until you've got it built. In this case, we're kind of skipping the part where we think the applicant's necessarily going to build it and saying, you know, because of these timing issues, we'll build it, but we need the money for it. And, you know, we've talked a lot about needing the money for it. We're going to have to validate if this moves forward, what that cost is. Do we factor in inflation based on the likely project timeline, et cetera, et cetera?
For what it's worth, I have said that I didn't think the bus pull-off, even though I'm a strong supporter of the bus, I didn't think bus pull-off by itself was a substantial enough benefit, but connected with a sidewalk that connected all, connected all the way to South Brownell and a crosswalk, to me, that is substantial. It's a big piece of infrastructure that's not on their property. So the sidewalk is a key part of it. To me, it's an integral part, it can't be separated or dropped. So somehow we have to ensure that it happens, even if it can't happen on the same schedule. Opinion?
Yeah, I agree with you. I was, I asked the question to try to get Matt to tell us how significant a benefit this was from the city's perspective of how fast were they planning on getting the sidewalk installed so that everybody knew that? But it was standing that as we were going through that intersection, that to me affirmed up my, in my mind, that the sidewalk was a significant benefit to the transportation system. I'm not real big on the bus stop. I think it should be a taxi stop, but that's another discussion. But it, it needs to be there to have the pedestrians and the bicycles clear that intersection. It, it would be real big for that to happen.
Any other feedback or comments or questions?
I wanted to say that the the homeowners were being real participants, I guess is the word. They, they worked with the committee. They were trying to solve, they were I, I knew I was going to be voting no, but I didn't want to vote no first and start a landslide. So the, the homeowners got to speak and they wanted this. If I, of all the choices, this is acceptable, I think, to them. There's improvements, I think, that any of us can think of, but it, it was good to see that the majority of the residents in the area supported the project as, as it got written out today.
And I want to thank you, Ron, for filling in when Alex couldn't be there all the time and carrying our, carrying our load. Thank you. Is, is there anything, any other comments or anything that staff needs from us at this point?
Just if you have questions or things you'd like us to work on bringing you for August 17, either now or over the next week or so, please let us know. I would editorialize a little bit that this is the, I think, the best reviewed specific plan thus far in the history of this tool existing in Williston. It's been a really good demonstration of the utility of appointing a committee to do this work because this, he's been doing this stuff, you know, since, since February. And there's no way the Planning Commission could do what it's been doing since February if it was having to run this process at the same time. And, you know, the, the written work and the staff memos you see here are 99.9% Emily's work product. She's done a really nice job staffing this and I really appreciate it.
Here, here. And if, and in the minutes, if you could say, thanks, Ron, and I also would thank Alex for getting it started. He didn't give it up because he didn't want to do it. He gave it up because he had conflicts on the meeting dates. And so, thank you, Emily. Thank you, Ron, and thanks to Alex as well for supporting this process. And again, the only question I'm going to have is whether existing vegetation needs to be cut for this proposed sound walls, because I don't think that's a good idea.
I don't think it is. It's integrated into the sound wall. But the issue is where that sound wall was going to be built. And they wanted it to be further away from their side. But there's just no room for that to happen.
Good. Moving on then, are we to TAF corners again? Trying to remember.
Where is TAF corners?
It's right in the middle of town, Ron.
Hold on, Emily's bringing the agenda back. I think what I have is just maybe
Is our work schedule?
Having it listed on the, the schedule.
Oh yeah, it's just listed.
So I will, will update that schedule that will be coming back with NECS for a decision about hearing or not. I will have an updated written work plan about the coding process for form-based code by then, as well as probably a few more materials to look at. We made a decision, we need to bring you back the cannabis and superfund bylaw amendments for a hearing. And it's also been so long since we did wetlands parking and cleanup that we wanted belt and suspenders on that. So we'll go into one big hearing because we, then we can transmit it all to the select board at once and save everybody a little bit of time. So there won't be any changes to wetlands or parking cleanup. Might have a couple more cleanup things we've noticed since the last time we touched it, but they will be non-substantive changes to the bylaw. It will just be making things clear. And we'll take care of cannabis and superfund on that September 7 meeting as well. And probably I'll have a lengthier upcoming meetings list on the next one because I'll be able to plug in a bunch more of that coding work.
So I have, this is very helpful, Matt, and I have a question about how do we deal and when do we deal with some, with those friction points? Leave. I think about, for instance, that on the map for the area around the Stormwater Pond, that's part of Maple Tree Place, I would really like to reserve all that land for municipal future use, including more space for traffic, for a transit center than is shown. And so if that's part of the vision that gets published and it has buildings and then developers want to do something with them, we're going to have a harder time than if we say, you know, this, we're graying this out for the moment. We're reserving it for possible municipal use. We already have a municipal hold on part of it, probably a third of the space that I'm talking about. How do we, how do we work that out?
Well, in that particular example, one of the elements of the work plan for coding that's kind of a question mark on our schedule right now is how and when to bring back the official map. So the vision, as I said, is, you know, it's a vision, but it's fuzzy. It reflects some general principles about how development would proceed in TAF corners. I would say on the official map, those areas that have buildings on them in the vision plan, but that the commission says we really want these to be green, put them on the official map as, as green, you know. At a minimum, what statute says is once you've put it on the official map, the developer who's doing new development needs to shape their projects around that. And then, yes, if you come down to brass tacks, you've got to try and buy it. But as a starter, it's a strong mandate to the developer to work around it. So I would do that in that case.
And that's a, a good point because, for instance, where Al Senakow was commenting that 16 acres of this land was listed as a park, and he didn't think that was the right use of it or that he wasn't in on it enough. Our experience, and you could take Finney Crossing example, is that any common green space keeps shrinking as projects go along. And so I feel like we should maximize. And the example for me is the Harvest Lane Loop across from Gardner Supply. I would like that entire loop to be listed as green space or event space, you know, an amphitheater and so forth. If later we renig and say, okay, there's a trade-off and we're going to allow us to build housing there, it's fine. But one of the reasons I feel that way is I feel like an amphitheater for outdoor events is not as compatible with residential right next to it as it is with the commercial that's there. And so I'd like to hold open that possibility that it could be used for that. And if we have housing listed on our map of that area, then we've sort of, I realize that's not the official map, that's the vision, but it's like having an official map that doesn't say we want.
Right. I, I think you, you're going to want to take an expansive view as to what you want to put on that official map. And, and you're right, you know, it starts a negotiation. If something is proposed, there, there's a conversation that ultimately might be about the price tag. There's also, in the case of green space, pending conversation about revising the town's recreation impact fee and available offsets for that fee liability related to conveying over lands for planned green spaces. So there's a, there's a nice sort of, I don't know if you want to call it carrot and stick or the two jaws of the pliers, but one way or another, you're, you're trying to set the conditions to actually get, get what you want. And so you can really refine that vision in the adoption of that regulatory document. It doesn't have to be the code. It's another regulatory policy document that you need to make this happen.
And in that particular case, it's a landowner who has a lot of land in that whole region. And so there's other opportunities for allowing more dense development than we otherwise would have as a trade as well, right?
Yeah, yeah, you may, you may look at it as, on the official map, this is green space, but your project is green space plus this developable lot adjacent. And you're going to take the units that would have gone where the town wants green space and put them, I mean, that's just sort of classic clustering. It just might be more vertical than, than not. So, you know, a lot of moving parts there that will exist in and around the development standards that you're going to be focused on. But I think that question that was on a list that Taylor from CCRBC prepared about the work plan was, when, when should we do the official map? Should it happen at the same time as the code? Should it happen later? And, you know, my vote is, yeah, do it at the same time or very close to it because it's a critical tool.
And we've said from the beginning that this TAF corners work is going to inform the official map for that region. And so it, that lies in keeping with that.
Right. So just like the development standards, you have pictures of buildings in the vision, but then you're going to write a code that says this is the kind of building that's allowed. And what somebody cannot do is point to the code and say, oh, but you, or point to the vision and say, oh, but you had a picture of this in your vision. That's what I want to build. You say, well, no, you know, that's an idea. But the code says, you know, you don't have somebody trying to scale off a, a vision drawing saying, well, that's 37 feet tall. You're saying I can only be 35. It's like, no, the, you know, the code prevails.
And that was really clear in like in the Wintuski wonders.
Yeah, you know, illustrative or example drawing ultimately.
Illustrative of intent.
Of intent.
Okay.
When would be the first permit that would be under a new form-based code?
Well, that's a great question.
We missed LLB. We had a main street there.
Yeah, and, and you know, you're going to, you're going to miss some other things too, because, you know, the, the development world hasn't stopped to wait to see what we do with this.
Hasn't picked up, knowing that we're going this way?
Not yet. I, I wouldn't be surprised if there's something on the smaller side or single-site side that, that accelerates because they know this is coming. But I, I don't know of anything in particular right now. I think generally large, commercial and mixed-use site developments, you know, they're on a timeline that is influenced by market conditions and financing and whether the anchor tenant's really ready to sign on or not, like LLB, you know, those kinds of things. There's not actually as much room for the developer to kind of speed up or slow down to time the regulation. But to answer your question more directly, Ron, once the code is under consideration by the select board, meaning that they've, probably that they've held their first public hearing on it, the, it can, you can begin to administer it as if it's been adopted. And go under Vermont law for 120 days. So you, you could actually start reviewing projects under the code before the code is adopted.
And I think that law is more so that a developer can't sneak something else in, knowing what's coming.
It does add some complexity because whatever that proposal is, it, it also has to meet the current bylaw. You know, they, they may be different enough from one another that, that they're in conflict. So, you know, you do want the select board to work pretty efficiently once they have something under consideration. But we could be talking springtime based on the draft project, project schedule that I've seen. That's a project schedule that imagines a first draft and essentially three subsequent drafts, you know, three subsequent complete drafts that are responsive to planning commission comments, stakeholder interviews, discussions with town departments, et cetera. I would love to see this being handed over to the select board before the end of January. We'll, we'll see if we make it. Megan and I need to talk a little bit about the planning commission meeting schedule and what happens closer to the end of December and what happens when we have a fifth Tuesday in November and how we, how we get there and if that's realistic. But that's about the fastest.
Seems ambitious, but great. Before we leave this, I wanted to go around and just make sure that anybody who wanted to comment on either the NECS or the form-based code process or ask the question has a chance to. And Kate, you've been completely quiet tonight. Do you have questions or concerns or comments?
No, I don't. No, I'm good.
Okay, and Shayla?
Yeah, I do two things. One, Emily, and well, so Ron, thank you again for the work you did with the subcommittee and Emily for your work. And Emily, you probably already are doing this and Matt, but I just want to make sure we save those ideas for the future town plan. Like, put them in some folder because I don't know how else we would remember. Because I think those are really salient and, and good ideas. And one of the things I struggled with was exactly that question of what is, you know, what is, so thank you. And then my comment on the town plan is a question to Matt in terms of the actual law and regulation around this. The code is not actually going to, so you're telling us the code is not going to detail the vision of like grid streets, that that, that that is the town, the official map, and that, and there's a question about when we do that official map. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Well, as it, as it relates to streets, the code will contain the regulating plan, which identifies the street types because that's the, the baseline for the building standards. So there will be a map of streets that's part of the code because there has to be. What the official map adds to that is the, the legal ability for the town to require those streets to be constructed where they are on the map. Does this, does that make sense? They're, they're very, very related, but they serve slightly different functions.
Okay, so, great. So I would definitely be a proponent of doing that sooner rather than later.
Okay, and, and Ron, you were commenting in response to Shayla, what we were muted to. Do you have anything more to say?
Oh, I was just, I had notes from all the meetings that I attended, and I'll bring them out folder when we start doing planning for the town plan.
Excellent. And anything else from you, Ron?
No.
Jill? Okay.
Shayla, did you have a second thing?
I think that was the second.
I'm sorry, I'm good. I'm all good.
The first was making sure we keep those notes and the second was the official map versus the code. Emily, did you have anything you wanted to add? Oh, Jill, go ahead.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, Emily? Okay, Matt?
I'm all set if everybody else is.
Okay, thank you all. We are once again ahead of time, but unless anyone objects, I'll just say we adjourn at 8:23.
I'll take it.
Okay, without objection? All right.
Thanks, everybody. Nice to see everyone again.
Bye, thank you.